This time, I would like to call to order the Yukon Oklahoma City Council Meeting for August 5th, 2014. And if you would please rise with me for the invocation from Pastor Ron Rasmussen, Christ Church Yukon, and the flag salute.
Father, we come to you as a blessed people. Part of a blessed city. We thank you, Lord, for the thirteen inches of rain this summer. We thank you for the financial blessings that you've poured into Yukon. And we recognize, Lord, that you expect us to be responsible and grateful. And I would just ask, Lord, that kind of a spirit, one of responsibility, as good stewards of what you've given us, that spirit would just pervade our time together tonight, and especially decisions that are made. We ask that, Father, in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Yanda?
At this time, we will recognize presentations and proclamations.
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the visitors' section. This is time to address the council for a non-agenda item. We have two people that would like to address the council tonight. First would be Tina Atkins, 905 Granite Court.
Hi, Tina Atkins. I will be the chamber president next year, in 2015. And I just wanted to thank you guys for the work-study. You know, of course, we would love to have had the agenda item approved last time, but this has been good. Amanda and I, the president current this year, have been able to speak to many of the people. And I think this has been a good way to come together, share our concerns, and show positive ways that we're going to work together to make the chamber and the city a better place. And I like what the pastor said, it's a blessed place that we do live. So I just wanted to thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Lieutenant Colonel Rick Caccini, 1140 Landmark.
1140 Landmark Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I would like to make a quick report on the one-year anniversary of our museum here in the city of Yukon. It is supported by the veterans of this community. And as you can see by my shirt, always remember, never forgotten. There are some organizations in the United States that have done just that. So you've read about it, and I won't talk anymore about it. We don't judge those people. But I want to let you know that this community, this city, has done an outstanding job of supporting the veterans. And I wanted to share that with you by making a presentation to the city. If you'd like to come down. I want to thank the city for supporting the veterans of this community for doing an outstanding job of supporting us. So thank you very much. Thank you, Father.
All right. You want me to sing, Jim?
Only there since 1972.
Newcomer.
I've lived here in Yukon since 1970. Recently, I've heard some rumors that bother me, and they concern the Snyder property. I realize that item has been pulled from the agenda, but I would like to either get something clarified or whatever. I hear that the city, there is talk that the city is going to move some of their offices or facilities to that area. That would be a big mistake for three reasons. One, if we lease the land and build a building, when that lease is negated, over with whatever, whoever owns that property gets the building, unless you want to have a big, expensive court fight on your hands. The second item is, that land's in the floodplain. Two businesses have come, tried to build out there, but they could not get building permits for their facilities because it's in the floodplain. We're going to build a building out there that'll house all of the city's records and employees in a floodplain? What happens if we do have a flood? Those records would be very difficult to restore. And you're going to lose employee time in cleaning up the mess. The third reason, there's a group of citizens working very hard to refurbish and rebuild and restore Route 66. How's it going to look when we have Route 66 all built up, new businesses moving in, hopefully a check cafe moving in, and we have buildings shuttered and closed down and locked up, right here on Main Street in Yukon? Think about it, and see if we can put a note to this rumor that I'm hearing about the city moving the city hall out there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no additional citizens that would like to address the council during the visitors' section. So at this time, we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2014; and B) payment of material claims in the amount of $93,629.62. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon, so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2014; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $740,155.13; C) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D) the renewal of the existing Youth and Family Services Incorporated Agreement for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, in the amount of $15,000; E) the renewal of the existing Yukon Sharing Ministry Incorporated Agreement for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, in the amount of $325; F) appointment of Bill Baker to the Planning Commission, representing Ward III, as recommended by council member Donna Yanda; G) is setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August 19th, 2014, 7:00 PM in the council chambers at the Centennial Building, 12th South, 12th South Fifth Street. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, consider approving a fee in lieu of detention in the amount of $300 for the Jim Weaver Building, located at 1138 Industrial Drive, as recommended by the city engineer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 4 is consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $31,391.30 for the purchase of 462 Polycarts from IPL Incorporated to be paid from the Capital Improvement Funds, as recommended by the sanitation director. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. On the, where do we stand on this? What's of our percentage of penetration at this point? If, look, if we took our entire base and said, how many Polycarts are going to be out there? I know we've been expanding and growing and everything else, but I don't, is there a projection as to where?
We continue to put out second Polycarts to residences all over the community. That is slowing. It is not stopped. I have visited with Bill concerning the matter. We believe that probably by the end of the year, and maybe one more purchase, maybe two of this type, we should have plenty, plus replacement carts available when, because wear and tear naturally occurs, and we need to have a few in reserve to take care of that.
Are we damaging, is the new equipment damaging any of the current carts?
No.
Just, are, they seem to be doing and holding up reasonably well. So this is just, we'll see a couple more of these than this?
Yeah.
Probably this year? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5 is to consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $77,476 for a maintenance agreement with the New World Systems for the ongoing support of the Police Department Computer-Assisted Dispatch System, CAD, to be paid from the Technology Capital Improvement Fund, as recommended by the tech director. Do we have a motion?
So, yes, so.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, we undertook this when we did the new police department and all that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And this is an ongoing, we're going to see?
Yes, that was, the first agreement was signed five years ago. It has expired. We are simply entering into a new five-year agreement. And this is the first year of payment.
Okay, absolutely. And it escalates every year as well. Is that correct, I think?
Yes.
Okay. What is the escalation percentage? Do you know, Gary, how much is going up every year?
I believe it's 4%. I think we're doing the, they have two different types of agreements. They have the original agreement, and then the modified agreement, modified to 4%. And the original was like seven. So they're pushing everybody to the modified, or the, I can't, the premium agreement, close to 4%.
Okay. And you're comfortable with that, then?
Mr. McCarron, I might add that questions of that type would pass through our city manager here at the horseshoe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Excuse me.
No, no problem. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah.
Having none, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 6 is to consider authorizing the city engineer to advertise and receive bids for the removal and replacement of the Yukon Community Center roof, and removal and replacement of damaged metal decking as required. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Sir?
I know we've talked a little bit about maybe doing some work to the community center, improving it, et cetera. If we work on the roof and the new proposed expansion or changes, would that affect?
We anticipate that the repairs will be such that will allow for the expansion to occur, rather than hinder the expansion. That answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving Resolution 2014-14, a resolution casting a vote for one trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund to fill the expiring term of trustee-at-large. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We need, so the motion needs to contain a nominee, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And I believe, if I might just interject here, I believe that we have a, our city manager has been?
You already authorized him.
Yes, that's what I thought.
We've already authorized him as the candidate.
So then, we need to specify his name in the motion. If you don't mind revising, you motion.
Okay. Motion is for Resolution 2014-14, is that we submit Grayson Bottom, our city manager, for that position.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 8 is consider approving Resolution 2014-15, a resolution to execute project agreement, execute project agreement, number 30715, parentheses, oh four, by and between the city of Yukon and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for construction of an interchange at I-40 and Frisco Road, 4.5 miles west of Kilpatrick Turnpike Interchange in Canadian County, with the city's obligation amount of $5.6 million, plus pre-construction costs to include planning, design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, and environmental clearance to be paid from the Frisco Road Tax Increment Finance District. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I just think this is a great opportunity for the community. I think that it's our west side door, just to open up the west side of Yukon out there in the area around Target and the hospital. So I think it's an important step, and it's a big price tag, but I think it's required, it's needed. I'm excited.
It only took us two years to get to the meeting where they finally agreed to do this.
I would say that I am in complete agreement with Councilman Alberts, that this interchange is going to be significant to the development of the area near the hospital, that most of our market, not most of our market, a significant part of our market comes from northwest of our community, west of our community, and southwest of our community. And I can assure you that if we make it easier for them to exit into Yukon, that our tax base is going to see and appreciate a significant difference. So I hope that this vote passes. Do we have any further discussion?
Having none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Awesome. Item 9, consider approving the final Trails Master Plan, a guidance document for the implementation of bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the city of Yukon.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Again, I'm equally as excited about this, because you can't be around to enjoy the prosperity of our community if you're not healthy. So I am excited that we could potentially hook up with Oklahoma City and just make our parks and trails, et cetera, in Yukon just better than they are. So I'm happy for this as well.
Yeah, Oklahoma City's not as healthy as us, anyway, John.
Mayor Quinette might disagree, but...
Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I share John's comments, in the sense that we've made great strides over the last, particularly the last five years or so, in the health areas, and considering making this a great place to be. So I appreciate this as well.
Thank you. And I might add, a shout-out to Councilman Alberts. He had a, has played a big role in driving the fitness craze that we enjoy here in Yukon right now. And I think he needs some recognition for that.
I don't know about that.
So, do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 10 is to consider approving Resolution 2014-16, a resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Association of Central Oklahoma Government's Public Fleet Conversion Grants Fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, we have done a couple of vehicles so far, have we not? How many have we done?
I believe altogether, we've done four. Arnold, is that correct? Three? And this will be for three more. I can also tell you very quickly, I had planned on it earlier, that we received a private, in private sector grant to do a fourth vehicle this year, from Apache Corporation. So we're going to get to convert four vehicles this year.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 11 is to consider approving Resolution 2014-17, a resolution replacing Resolution 2014-04, authorizing application for transportation alternative program, TAP funds, in the amount of $480,000, to be matched by capital improvement funds, and the amount of $120,000 for the construction of Phase 1 of the Yukon Master Trails Program, Lake Shore Drive linkage with the Oklahoma City Trail System.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I might mention that by us spending so much time on the developing the Master Trails Program, that Audrey, working out of Development Services, Audrey Fitzsimmons, has been successful in acquiring $656,000 worth of grants in the development of those, of the initial stages of that Trails Program. Congratulations to Audrey. Mitchell, thank you very much. We appreciate your work, and all the citizens that came together and formed the citizens' group that planned the Trails as you see them.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 12 is to consider approving K&amp;M Wrecking to demolish the Snyder Building, located at 10 West Main, in the amount of $56,150 to be paid from the Legislative Capital Improvement Fund, as recommended by the planning director.
That's wonderful.
And that is the item we're pulling from the agenda this evening. There will be no comment or discussion on that item. Moving on to item 13, is our city manager's report, information items only.
Just because the Fourth of July Freedom Fest has passed us by to this point, does not mean that our Parks and Recreation Department is not still active and working hard. Outside of the particular events that we're going to talk about this evening, we are going to have our first meeting for Christmas in the park next week. So we are also G3 banned in the outdoor movie, Despicable Me 2. That's going to be a great event, Chisholm Trail Park, 7:00 PM on August 7th, that's Thursday night. Also, Pooch's in the Pool, our annual closing of the pool, always ends with people bringing their dogs, putting them in the swimming pool, and having a great event at the swimming pool. That is Sunday, August 10th, at the City Splash Pool at City Park, from 5:30 to 7:00. $3 per dog. The Battle of the Bands, Yukon High School-Yucan Coalition, also at Chisholm Trail Park, Tuesday, August 12th, at 6:00 PM. Going to be quite an event. And finally, the Carnival Concert featuring the Dust Bowl Boys, Chisholm Trail Park, 7:00 PM, Thursday, August 14th. There'll be train rides, crafts, games, and water play for all the kids. This, if you'll remember back to our budget discussions and our budget workshop, we discussed the need for a benefits coordinator to help us in human resources. We have chosen, rather than to hire somebody, that we would go with a contracted service. The service that we have chosen for that particular service to the city is Premier Source Strategic Employer Solutions. We actually received five proposals to do that, and Cindy and I looked at all of them. Premier Source is willing to do this for the brokerage fee for our health insurance at no additional cost to the city. And they'll provide all the legal work that we need done, particularly on human resources. And it is done through the firm that we already use all the time, anyway, McAfee Taft. So we're very excited about this opportunity, and look forward to their service to the city. Finally, back to school. We hope that everybody will remember that we're going back to school on the 14th. Please watch your speed in the school zones. Chief Corn and his staff certainly will be watching the speed for you. So we hope that everybody will be safe, be alert, particularly as we all go back to school, and we have kids in the school zones. With that, Mayor, I close my remarks and stand ready for your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council for our city manager?
I have one for Grayson, and I'll just say, Grayson, I, we had some comments on the highway tonight that we voted on for Frisco and everything else, but I've had a number of my folks also ask about what's going on with Highway 4. And would you care to comment on that?
As I wrote in my city council update to you, part of that meeting that we had two weeks ago today, at 3:30 at the Department of Transportation Office, the first conversation actually focused on State Highway 4, rather than the interchange. And the consensus that I came away with, Joe, Larry, you were both in there with me, was that we will have the go-ahead to start purchasing right-of-way before November 1st of this year.
That's great, really is. Thank you, sir.
Do we have any additional questions for our city manager? Having none, moving on to item 14, is new business.
No new business tonight?
No new business. Item 15 is council discussion. Councilman Alberts?
I don't think you have anything this evening.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm trying to get out of town. I'm ready to get home.
Councilman McCarron, keep it short, he's trying to get out of town.
He's trying to get out of town. I just want to thank everyone who came and spoke for the chamber this evening. The gentleman that spoke about Snyder's, I think it's really, really important that folks come up and come before the council. I think it's pretty neat. And beyond that, I want to thank Rick Caccini for coming up tonight and presenting, making his presentation as well. Yukon really is a great place to be. So with that, I yield back there.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
I do want to thank also everyone that came tonight. That's really important, to support the city. And also, I'm just real excited to get this Frisco Road exchange underway. This is going to be a major impact on the city of Yukon. So I'm excited to get that going. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. The only thing I would like to make mention of is, just to express my deep sadness that we today, as a country, lost a two-star general in Afghanistan. He was assassinated by an Afghani soldier that we trained and equipped. And I know here in Yukon, just as a little individual that I am, I have very little influence on foreign policy, but he's the first general that we've lost in a combat situation since We have midterm elections coming up in November. I'll close my comments with that. Item 16 is to consider a motion to recess as a Yukon City Council and convene in the executive session for discussion of the purchase or appraisal of real property, as provided in 25 OS 2003, Section 307B3.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This time, we'll adjourn.
Call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
At this time, we'll adjourn. And we would also like to invite our city manager to join in the executive session. Item seventeen is to consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
I would like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. At this time, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.